It's good.
Good evening. I'd like to welcome you into a new organizational meeting. This is the 51st seating of the Town Council Chambers on Monday, July 7th. And now I would like to turn this meeting over to the Senior Counselor, Counselor Daniel.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Next order of business is the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance, to the Father, of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Very good. At this point, we'll have the swearing in of the Counselors-elect by the Town Clerk, Natty Bonnades.
Counselor Adams. Counselor Montigny and Counsel Provost, if you want to just come up as well.
Yes.
Thank you. Do you, David S. Adams, solemnly swear to perform all duties incumbent of you as a Town Counselor for the Town of Southbridge until June 30th, 2028, faithfully and impartially according to the laws of commonwealth and abide by the charter and bylaws of the Town of Southbridge, so help you God. Thank you, sir. And I also have to give you the open meeting law and the conflict of interest, so if you would just sign your name right there. Thank you. Counselor Montigny. Do you, Michael G. Montigny, solemnly swear to perform all duties incumbent of you as a Town Counselor for the Town of Southbridge until June 30th, 2028, faithfully and impartially according to the laws of the commonwealth and abide by the charter and bylaws of the Town of Southbridge, so help you God?
I do, sir.
Thank you. And then I also need to give you the open meeting law and the conflict of interest, so if you would just sign right there, please. Thank you. Congratulations. Counsel Provost? Can you raise your hand? Do you, Gil J. Provost, solemnly swear to perform all duties incumbent of you as a Town Counselor for the Town of Southbridge until June 30th, 2028, faithfully and impartially according to the laws of the commonwealth and abide by the charter and bylaws of the Town of Southbridge, so help you God?
I do.
Thank you.
You're sure?
Congratulations. And then I need to give you the conflict of interest of the meeting law, so if you would just sign right there. Congratulations, sir.
The next item on the agenda is the invocation to be done by Pastor Esteban Carrasco of the House of Destiny Church.
Counselors, Town of Southbridge, thank you for this opportunity. Second Timothy, Chapter 1 and 2 says, verses 1 and 2, excuse me, says, "It is our duty to pray for those that are in authority." So it is a privilege to be able to do that tonight. My only word of advice is that you would be individuals of integrity above self at all times. Dearly Father, we thank you for this moment. We thank you for those that have been elected to lead our community. We pray for wisdom. We pray for unity. We pray for character and integrity. Lord, we pray for the health of all those that serve. We pray that you would guide them in every decision. Bring our city back to fruition. Let it be a light on a hill that I cannot behead. And we pray in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Pastor. Madam Secretary, roll call, please.
Counselor Lazo.
Present.
Counselor Montigny.
Present.
Counselor Adams.
Present.
Counselor Shanier is excused.
Excuse.
Counselor Daniel.
Present.
Counselor Dow. Counselor Kelly.
Present.
Counselor Ortiz.
Present.
And Counselor Provost.
Present. Very good. We have a present and a quorum. Item number seven is election of a permanent chairperson. Nominations are now in order for the office of Chairperson of the Town Council. Counselor Montigny.
Thank you, Counsel Daniel. I'd like to nominate Counselor Lazo for Chairman.
Counselor Lazo is nominated. Are there any further nominations for the office of Chairperson? Are there any other nominations? If not, nominations are closed. A vote will now be taken by roll call, during which each Counselor, when called upon, shall state their choice for the office of Chairperson of the Town Council. Madam Secretary.
Counselor Montigny.
Lazo.
Counselor Adams.
Yes.
Counselor Daniel.
Yes.
Counselor Dow.
Yes.
Counselor Kelly.
Yes.
Counselor Ortiz.
Lazo.
And Counselor Provost.
Lazo. I don't get the vote.
He gets the vote, too.
What's that?
He gets a vote.
Counselor Lazo. Thank you.
There being eight votes for Counsel Lazo. Counsel Lazo is elected Chairperson of the Town Council.
Thank you very much. Counselors, I want to thank you for believing that I would be here again. Hopefully, it's because of past performance. Moving forward, not a lot is going to change, except we added two workhorses to the council. Counselor Adams, I'd like to congratulate you. Welcome back to the council.
Thank you.
Counselor Montigny, I congratulate you on your reelection. Back to the council. Mr. Provost, congratulations. Your mother and father would be proud of you. After the year they spent working in town, being citizens of Southbridge, I think they'd be very proud of you right now. But I'd like to congratulate you as a friend and as the new chairman. We expect you to step up to the plate. We have a lot of good counselors to learn from. I know sometimes we get on the council and we think we know, I know what I'm going to do. I'm going to do this. I'm going to do that. And then when you get there, there's a process, a procedure. And even as many years as I've had in this government, you don't know everything. And we still are learning from each other. We look through different lenses on issues. And it's all you got to do is vote your conscience. Be your own man, as you said in your interview, and you're going to be a great counselor.
Thank you, Chairman Lazo.
I'm going to move on to Agenda Item Number Seven. Excuse me. Agenda Item Number Eight, the election of Vice Chairperson. Counselor Provost.
I'd like to nominate Mike Montigny.
Mike Montigny has been nominated for Vice Chairman of the Southbridge Town Council. Are there any other nominations for Vice Chairman? Are there any other nominations for Vice Chairman? If there's no further nominations, we'll call for a roll call by name.
Counselor Lazo.
Montigny.
Counselor Montigny.
Montigny.
Counselor Adams.
Montigny.
Counselor Daniel.
Montigny.
Counselor Dow.
Yes.
Counselor Kelly.
Yes.
Counselor Ortiz.
Montigny.
And Counselor Provost.
Montigny.
Congratulations to the Vice Chairman of the 51st Council. Agenda Item Number Nine, adoption of permanent seating arrangement. Will the elected Chair then will direct this procedure?
If you'd all just come up, please. Thank you. Counselor Adams. Counselor Adams has picked seat number one. Counselor Daniel. Counselor Daniel has chosen seat number four. Counselor Shanier. Counselor Shanier has picked seat number seven. Counselor Dow.
Mike, is this the one right here?
Yes, sir.
Counselor Dow has picked seat number three. Counselor Kelly. Counselor Kelly has chosen seat number two. Counselor Ortiz. Counselor Ortiz has chosen seat number six. Counsel Provost? Counsel Provost has chosen seat number five.
We have a permanent seating arrangement for the 51st Council. And at this time, we'll go on to Agenda Item Number 10. We're going to have a five-minute recess and we'll reconvene for a short regular meeting. Very most adjourned.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Montigny, second by Ortiz. All those in favor? Opposed? Inanimites of all present? We reconvene in five minutes. I'd like to welcome everybody to the Southbridge Town Council meeting, Monday, July 7th, 2025, 7:00 PM, McKinnon Council Chambers. Agenda Item One, Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance, to the Father, of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Madam Secretary.
Counselor Lazo.
Present.
Counselor Montigny.
Present.
Counselor Adams.
Present.
Counselor Shanier is excused. Counselor Daniel.
Present.
Counselor Dow.
Present.
Counselor Kelly.
Present.
Counselor Ortiz.
Present.
And Counselor Provost.
Present.
Thank you.
Moving on to Agenda Item Number Three, Consider an Accept Meeting, minutes of May 29th, 2025, special Town Council meeting, and June 16th, 2025, Town Council meeting.
I'm going to abstain, Chairman. Okay. So moved.
Second.
To motion, to second. Any additions, corrections, or deletions to the minutes of the meeting? If none, all those in favor? Opposed? Abstain? Two abstentions. Moving on to Agenda Item Number Four, Subcommittee Reports. Department of Public Works, no report at this time. We have not reorganized our subcommittees. Our Education Human Services, we have no report at this time. General Government, no report at this time. Planning and Development, no report at this time. Protections to Person and Property, no report at this time. We'll move on to Chairman's announcements. I've got a couple of things. First of all, I'd just like to say, Counsel Shanier, if you're looking, if you're watching us here today, we miss you. Prayers were answered. He had back surgery, and he made a great recovery. He was operated on Wednesday of last week. Thursday, they had him up walking. He came home yesterday. He was very optimistic he was going to be here tonight, but I didn't work out for him. But George, we take your time. You're on the mend, and we can't wait to get you back up here. And thank you very much for answering our prayers. He's doing very well. I'd just like to talk about the next upcoming year, the upcoming year that we're moving into, the 51st year as a council, and we're closing out the 50th. Things are going to, the agenda stays the same. Southbridge first agenda. I always said that if somebody ever wanted to take the chairmanship more than two years, I think they would be a little off the edge, maybe. I know back in the 80s, I did two years, and you were burnt out at the end of the two years. You didn't want to do it again. But I have to say, with this commonsense council that we have, the communication that they perform, this job as chairman is not a difficult job like it was in the 80s. There was a lot of conflict, a lot of negativity. It seems like Southbridge is on the move right now. A lot of good things are happening. People see the roads being done. They see various projects. I mean, we are building a brand-new fire station to replace a 100-year-old building. We're working on a animal control facility, which should be going out to bid within 30 days. I think we are in a position to make money, help out other towns with some of our facilities. The town hall is being studied for renovation and restoration as one of the historical buildings in town. The roads are going to continuously get torn up and paved, as counselors had promised five years ago, and continue to work on them. The Central Street Restaurant District, the irons are in the fire. A lot of different ideas connected to the TIPS project that's been worked on for a few years now. We have also the rail trail in full swing, as everybody sees things happening with the rail trail. It's just part of the transformation of the Town of Southbridge. When we look at the subcommittees, and I do, I'm going to be handing out my subcommittee appointments, we're positioning people where they're, where they want to be, where they can become an asset to the operations of subcommittee. This is why people don't see a war on the Town Council floor, because we have disagreements knocked at ten, as we call it, and work hard on getting rid of the issues at subcommittee. Sometimes we have some passion at the council meeting, as Counselor Adams has always said. Passion is good, just as long as it doesn't get personal. And that's what's nice about this council. It doesn't get personal. As we look back on the projects that are already started, there are going to be some new ones. I know that I talked to Counselor Adams about transfer station. There are many ideas that are already being, going to be fed into the subcommittee process. And we're going to continue to feed to the subcommittee, PPP, General Gov. This year, we're going to have, I have to appoint a five-member Charter Review Committee, and then we have to have a five-year Bylaw Review Committee has to be appointed. We need citizens to come forward, to volunteer for the Charter Review Committee and the Bylaw Committee. We also need citizens on many boards and commissions. And we need our citizen members of our subcommittees to re-up another year, or we need to get other people onto these subcommittees to work hand-in-hand with this council moving forward. With all the things that are on the plate, you have to ask yourself a question. What's going on in Southbridge? You got a guy like Counselor Daniels who's been saying, why not Southbridge? Well, all of a sudden, it's gaining traction. Oh, no. Southbridge is where you want to make a destiny. You want a restaurant. Get more liquor license. Get this. It's moving in the right direction. We have to continue our mission with what we want to be when we grow up. There's a battle going on right now about housing. Do we want to build 300 units of housing? Obviously, it's not for Southbridge residents. That discussion will take place at the council level. We have a project right next door. It's a bad project for Southbridge. There's a battle going on right now down at the planning board level. If people do not do the right thing for Southbridge, they shouldn't be serving on any board or any commission. I think you have to put the town first at all times. Even your personal opinion, as much as, geez, I'd like to go, this is not good for the town. I have to go this way. It's tough decisions that this council makes that lays out the road to the future, and we're going to continue to do that. The ones that have been on, just got on, or the ones that were already on and re-upped it for another tour. In closing, if you can conceive it, and your heart can believe it, then you'll achieve it. That's what we need to do this year. Thank you very much. We'll move on to... One last thing. I'm going to hand out the subcommittee appointments. There are no citizen members on here, because we're going to have them opt up. I worked with the people on the council to form the subcommittees. The chairman, General Government will be Steve Kelly as chairman, Joe Dow as a member, John Daniels as a member. Education Human Services, Michael Montigny, Chair, Ari Ortiz, a member, Gil Provost, a member. Protections to Person and Property, Chairman Ari Ortiz, Gil Provost as a member, George Shanier as a member. DPW, Dave Adams as a chairman, Joe Dow as a member, George Shanier as a member. Planning and Development, John Daniels as chairman, Steve Kelly as a member, and Dave Adams as a member. These will be the standing subcommittees for the 51st Council moving forward. That's all I have on the Chairman's announcements. I'd like to move on to presentations. We do not have any presentations at this time. Moving on to Citizens Forum. Are there any citizens that would like to address the council on any issues that are not on the agenda here tonight? I would like to congratulate this next speaker for her election and her writing campaign. She's a newly-elected Southbridge School Committee Member. Congratulations.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, Town Council. My name is Stephanie Rivers, and I'd like to congratulate Mr. Provost on becoming Town Council Member, also returning Town Council Vice Chairman, Mr. Montigny, and also Mr. Adams returning to Town Council. Congratulations. I come before you tonight to offer up an idea for business for the Town of Southbridge, and knowing that Ocean State Job Lot has now decided to leave Southbridge and go on to another town that will leave that building vacant. And I do know that it is up to those owners of that plaza to retain new business. However, at one time, the Town of Southbridge had a twin cinema in Southbridge in that plaza. And also, when the Department of Defense Training Center came to Southbridge, I believe one of the accolades of that deal was to provide Southbridge with a movie theater, but unfortunately, that did not work out. And I do know also that there is a deluxe cinema in Sturbridge. So my idea was, maybe the Town of Southbridge could entertain a conversation with the owners of the cinema in Sturbridge to potentially look at coming to Southbridge and offering us a twin cinema as an accolade for a cinema that isn't deluxe, but is standard for the community and also the other towns to be able to come to and enjoy movies, and also have a reason to use our rail trail to walk down to the plaza once again. Because we did have a walking town in Southbridge years ago, where we did have that option of walking down and enjoying a movie and enjoying also eating out in that part of town. So I thought, maybe we could entertain that as a business idea and have a conversation with those business owners over in Sturbridge. Also, Southbridge is rich in history, and I've been saying for a while now, why don't we utilize Main Street more in a historical aspect and having it more walker-friendly by installing historic markers along Main Street showcasing Southbridge's rich multicultural history of everything that is Southbridge and how Southbridge came to be. And we could also engage the library in this project to be able to formulate sort of a walking trail through Southbridge's downtown area and also give people the opportunity to experience the history of Southbridge and its foundation and its origins, origins, excuse me. And that would give people a reason to also come to the downtown area of Southbridge as well. So those are my ideas, and I just wanted to share them with you tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other citizens that would like to address the Southbridge Town Council on any issues that are not on the agenda? Mr. Buckston, always a pleasure.
Good evening, new council, 51st Council. Impressive. Congratulations to you all, and I wish you the best of, I hate to say luck, I think, the best of your efforts moving the town forward. I'd just like to say that I like the chairman's list of new advancements in town, and I think it's great looking forward. As for myself, after coming to this podium for the last 30 years and talking about recycling and trash and curbside, helping on various committees with the town, I'm looking forward to opportunity to sit down with the town and express a program or an organization to help recycling and jobs within the Town of Southbridge. More to come later. But thank you for your time and effort, and look forward to working with the new council. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other citizens that would like to address Southbridge Town Council?
Point of order. Would the Chair kindly remind the citizens to state their name and address before speaking?
I just thought he was a regular.
It's for the record, you. It's for the record, Chair.
For the record. Who are you?
Kevin Buckston.
Name and address.
Kevin Buckston, 52 Cheltenham Street. Thank you. The chairman's introduction was threw me off the normal pace. Thank you, Mr. Park.
Thank you. Moving on. Any other citizens that would like to address the council at this time? If not, moving on to eight. Vote to reappoint Sharon Morissette as the recording clerk for the Town Council.
Second.
Is a motion, a second discussion. If not, all those in favor? Opposed? Inanimites of all present? Congratulations. Number nine, vote to adopt the proposed FY 2026 Town Council schedule.
So moved.
Has a motion, a second discussion. No discussion, all those in favor? Opposed? Inanimites of all present? Mr. Chair, Counsel Adams?
I'd like to amend the agenda tonight to add 9A in there. Want to add in the Rule Number 23 on the Rules and Regulations, which specifically states, if you find it, there it is. It was adopted February 13th, 2023. Southbridge Town Council Rules and Regulations shall be discussed, reviewed, and voted on for accuracy at the first regularly scheduled Town Council meeting annually.
I'll second the motion to suspend the rules.
Suspend the rule to add an agenda item? Is a motion, a second, discussion? If not, all those in favor? Opposed? Inanimites of all present? Counsel Adams?
Thank you.
That's to waive the rules. Now, we're going to put this, can you state the... Pull the record for the secretary.
It's no problem. Vote to approve the Southbridge Town Council Rules and Regulations, which shall be discussed, reviewed, and voted on for accuracy at the first regularly scheduled Town Council meeting annually.
Second.
Is a motion, a second, any discussion? If not, all those in favor? Opposed? Inanimites of all present? Moving on to 10, Counselors Forum. Moving on to 10, councillors' forum. Councillor Adams?
Well, thank you, Mr. Chair. I appreciate it. Please stand by for my soapbox. I pulled it in here on a F-250. So give me one second, please. First of all, I wish councillor Shenier the best, and I'm glad he's recovering well and his family as well, who has supported him tremendously. Glad to see him back at home as of, I believe it was yesterday. I do want to congratulate the chair and vice chair on your nominations and obviously approval to become our parts of our leadership within the town council. So congratulations to you. I want to thank the town manager for meeting with me for about an hour and a half the other day as we discussed multiple items and nothing that was on his, on his whiteboard was really any different than what I saw about a year ago, but it was great to catch up and to find out where some of these items were at and how they've moved along, which some have moved along, but just like before, it's got, it's good to see, and the chair has mentioned it, it's good to see the fruition of what happened six years ago, five years ago, four years ago, three, and it's finally moving along, especially with a lot of the infrastructure. Still a lot of work to do. So I thank him for that. I, I want to mention, I just want to address councillor Montigny. I'm looking forward to working with you, the Amazon issue, also the highway. I'd love to get the update on anything that's transpired the past 12 months. Councillor Ortiz, I look forward to talking to you about the housing projects you were talking about with the Center of Hope, and I look forward to having you give a brief to the council, maybe at a council whole meeting or something like that, up to the chair, to tell us where we're at with that. I know there's a lot of work to happen. Councillor Daniel, look, look forward to working with you again on, I think I'm on planning and development with you again. So I look forward to working with you, Peg, Kate, all, all those individuals, great individuals, Sue down there, and working on the infrastructure projects, part of the DPW. Councillor Kelly, I look forward to working with you on some of the clauses to hopefully double the abatement on some seniors and blind clauses that we accepted way back when. We'd love to see us double that back up like we did the veterans. And then obviously, I'm looking forward to, as far as working with the school board and the EHS chair and the subcommittee to get our schools back, I look forward to that teamwork that has to happen through the whole process. We see the light at the end of the tunnel. I'm looking forward to seeing how this all will mix, mix together and make a cohesive team in the near future. I plan on and working with Representative Marcy, Senator Fatman, our agricultural items for the schools itself, something that we talked about over a year ago, and it feels like it, it's gone nowhere at this point in time. So I'd like to see why that is. Looking forward to working with them as well and hopefully freezing taxes on seniors, on their property taxes. I know other towns have done it. I look forward to working with them to see how we can possibly do it and afford it at the same time with a proper plan. So also, work short, you know, we, we just recently helped with CBG money. I'm glad the town council voted in favor of that. It's short-term to help with seniors that are in real need, utilizing that mini entitlement fund. But that's a short-term plan. Looking forward to a long-term plan and looking forward to working with the planning board as well, because I know there's a lot of talk about housing within the town, downtown area. Like to see where that ends up going. The chair also mentioned about the transfer station that is already in the works. We've already had discussions with Ms. Dean about how we could properly do that and along with our curbside collection agency. Looking forward to working with the redevelopment authority, because they have a lot more power than we, we give them credit for, and I'd like to see them actually step up to the plate and doing some of this work with them. No slam on them, but I think it's time for them to work with the town council, see where we can go from that. I'm also looking forward to working with the landowners within this town who have promised me, me personally, working with veterans housing. I cannot wait to have that conversation. I'm looking forward to keeping their, their word at everything that they spoke of with me. So I'm looking forward to that and senior housing possibly down the road. That is also was promised given to me as well. So I'm looking forward to working with those business partners and getting that done through the town council and them. And a lot more to discuss. Obviously, I do a lot of Facebook Lives. But I want to thank the residents at the end for voting me back in. I appreciate it. I do have a lot more in the tank, as I mentioned before. I expect a lot of hard work through this whole thing, from the town council all the way to, you know, the staff as well to help people out and work for this community and make it a stronger community than, than we left it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Adams. Councillor Kelly?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. First, I'd like to congratulate councillor Adams and councillor Provost on their election to the council. I'm looking, I'm very much looking forward to working with both of you as, in the coming year. Also, would like to congratulate councillor Montigny on his reelection to the council and also his election, election to the, the vice chairmanship, as well as councillor Lazo and his reelection to, to the chairmanship. So anyway, I'm looking, I'm, I'm looking forward very much to what's on horizon for Southbridge. I think we have a lot of great things coming, coming in the next year. We finally seem to be on, on a pass, path out of receivership. I think we've got a good school board now to really help navigate that, that end goal, to that end goal. And I think perhaps a receiver who is going to at least be cooperative with us as we try to achieve that goal. Still need to keep the pressure up, though. We can't let that ball drop. We need to keep, we need to keep moving forward with that. A lot of great things happen in Southbridge. We see the roads getting paved. Everybody complains about the roads, and if you look around, they're, things are getting done. Recently, we had Dresser Street paved, and it's very nice for me anyway to commute, when I commute down to the town council, I come that way, so I'm not in fear of losing my axles anymore. But that's just one road. We've also, in the last couple of years, paved Guelph Road. We've done the back end of South, South Street, and we have many more road projects on, on the horizon. Business development downtown is, is, is a big issue. We still need to press forward with that. We need to, we need to, you know, we need to try to attract business down there. We need to encourage entrepreneurship down there. We need people who are going to bring in unique retail, unique retail and restaurants and attractions into the downtown area. That is a key piece of getting, of, of having the rail trail work for us. Rail trail being hopefully a, an attraction, but we're going to need to have businesses to feed that as well. So looking for ideas and ways that we can continue to attract business. I agree with councillor Adams and other councillors on, on the housing issues. I think we have to always, when we look at a housing project, though, we have to always say, how does this benefit Southbridge? We can do a lot of housing, housing projects with state money, with federal money. The problem is, those don't necessarily, those do not necessarily benefit Southbridge residents. What we wind up having to have is 300 new units, and we have three, 250 of them occupied by people from Worcester and the surrounding communities. So, so we have to be careful in what, in, in, in the way we develop going forward. I'm all for housing, people need housing, and people need affordable housing. But, but we just want to be smart about it. So anyway, in any event, Southbridge has a lot to look forward to. Can't wait to get to work. Thank you.
Councillor Dow?
Thank you, Chair, through you. I want to congratulate councillor Adam, councillor Provost, and councillor Montigny for their winning the election. And Chair Lazo, congratulations. Vice Chair Mike Montigny, congratulations. And I'm looking forward to work with all the councils, whatever Southbridge need, not personal need. Thank you.
Councillor Daniels?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. I also want to give my best wishes to George, councillor Shenier. He took a pretty good spill, and he's coming through like a champ. So George, get well quick. We need you up here. I'd like to congratulate councillor Montigny on his reelection, councillor Adams on his kind of reelection. Welcome back. And councillor Provost, you're a freshman.
Thank you.
Good luck. It's going to be a long three years, and then it's going to be a short three years. Goes both ways. So congratulations. Councillors Lazo, Montigny, we've had a good run. Thank you, and we hope to continue that good run with a good council. So congratulations on your reelections to the chair and the vice chair. I, I got a phone call Saturday, which took me back because it was literally the fourth phone call I've gotten probably in two months regarding a really mundane issue. But my concern is, is the, the impression that we're, we must be giving to people at home and here in the audience during council sessions. The gentleman on Saturday that called me stated that he's 82 years old, and he wants to know why we're up here looking at our phones and laughing while we're paying, we're spending his tax money. And I asked him to elaborate on that, and he said he sees us up here on our phones. I'm guilty of that during the meetings and that we seem to be jovial while we're making votes on very important issues that affect the town. I let him talk for a good 10 minutes, just getting it out, and I really didn't have much to say to him, because that's his perception. That's what he sees. And if he sees it, other people see it too. That's the perception that we're giving out there. So I thought about this long and hard over the weekend, and I decided that I'm not going to have my phone out even anymore during council meetings. I have it with me. It's in my holster, the bell is off, and I will not bring it up at all in any way, shape or form. And I would ask my fellow councillors to consider that kind of an action as well. I take it very seriously when I'm voting on things like the, the tax rate and buying vehicles for the DPW or for the school department, spending money eventually, hopefully, on a rehabilitation of the town hall, on approving funding for the firehouse, the transfers that we went through last week to tidy up the accounts. To that gentleman, yes, I do recognize that this is your tax dollar, that at 82 years old, you do have a hard time coming up with that dollar figure that you have to pay to help us to take care of the town. And I want you to know that you struck a chord with me and that I'm taking you very seriously at what you said, as well as those previous constituents that have talked to me as well. So because of that, I will not have my phone here. I will be acting more appropriately, I hope, so that you see that I do care about what it is that I'm doing up here and what it is that we as a council as a whole are doing up here as well. So thank you again for that phone call. I appreciate everything that you said to me, and I hope that I can do better for you and for the town as a whole. That's what you elected me for three times, and that's what I hope to do during the last two years of my term. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Councillor Provost?
Thank you, Chairman, through you. First of all, I'd like to say, George, councillor Shenier, my thoughts and prayers are with you. I hope you recover fast and speedy. We need you up front here. And I also like to thank, I mean, congratulate councillor Adams, councillor Montigny, and councillor Lazo on chair and vice chair. You both deserve it. Hope you do a great job, and I know you will. I shouldn't say that. And I hope everybody had a happy 4th of July, because I know I did. And I also like to thank all the voters coming out and voting for me. I really appreciate your support and your time, and I promise I will not let you down. Thank you.
I'd like to move on to the gentleman that got voted best dressed tonight.
What about me now? I was going to say, what? Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. I'd like to congratulate councillors Montigny, Adams, and Provost. I'd also like to congratulate my chairman and vice chairman, Scott Lazo and Mike Montigny. As I sit up here tonight, I look around and the people continue to speak. They put a team together up here that is unbelievable. This council is going to get it done and do whatever it takes to make our town great again. Thank you.
Councillor Montigny?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, everybody, for the congratulations. And George, councillor Shenier, we are all thinking of you and very happy to hear you're back at it. Just already got to say thank you, but thank you to all the friends and family of all of us that showed up tonight for this. We've got a long road ahead of us for a year where we have, like the chairman said, a council full of such good common sense. It should be really not too difficult for us to get a lot of good, hard work done, whereas in the past, it might have been like pulling teeth. And I think that this year, you're going to see a lot of projects, like was said before, the fire station, everything come to fruition, and we're going to just continue to move forward. We're going to, we're going to continue.
The strike has crashed, so I have to reboot it, so stop right after telling these dogs.
Okay.
From you. Sorry.
Well, I mean, no. I, I don't know if we're going to really repeat anything.
Yeah.
It is what it is. She, she's taken a minute, so it's still a legal meeting, but thanks for letting us know.
Damn it, somebody saw me on TV?
All right. Anyway, to those here, thank you very much for coming. We really appreciate it. And to the fellow councillors, I'm very excited to get to work after the first term. I have promised you this before, and I'll promise you all, each and every one of you again, I will work harder than I ever have before. And I am very excited to get the opportunity to be your vice chairman again, extremely excited to work alongside all of you as the EHS subcommittee chairman, and I'm looking...